We're what?
We are on. Okay.
Well, thanks.
Pretty good.
One of the problems that we have on this agenda is we have this issue of the same as being held up. And I know that we have this like to say some things.
Tough, tough last block.
You could at least open it up for discussion for now.
Peter was there, my husband was at the game.
Yeah, at least briefly.
Okay. Yeah.
Oh, you feel too bad.
I'm completely fine with that.
That one kid at Trinity.
That's great.
I do too. I think this is awesome.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh.
Right.
I just kid about it.
Okay.
They're working very hard to secure communications.
Serious.
Right. It's good. Hey, Chris?
Can we relay that message to him, maybe?
Yes.
If I shut that screen off?
Yeah. Do you think you'll ever get it?
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Are we ready? Are we on the air?
We are on the air.
Okay.
He was just suggesting that maybe since Chris Bauer and others, uh, facilities things more than likely, that maybe we move this on.
Uh, good evening. I apologize for being late. I had to travel to Lyme and back today. And, um, got a little hung up. So, we're starting our March 22nd, 2007 New Market School Board meeting. And, uh, calling the meeting into order. And the first order of business is for James Lozado, Libes, and the Pledge of Allegiance. James?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James. I'm gonna read the school board mission statement, school district mission statement, excuse me. The New Market School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education by creating a safe and successful learning community that embraces diversity and responds to the social, emotional, intellectual, and emotional needs, and physical needs of every child. We are dedicated to fostering links to the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society. At this time, the public is welcome to make comments about agenda items. Mr. Thayer.
Um, I'm just here for a minute, and then I'm going home and watch you folks on TV, 'cause I think it's a much better view. Uh, no offense taken, please. But in any case, this is thinking back to last Tuesday and the events and talking to folks around town. I, I just feel that, um, while that's a setback, we can't let it be a stop measure of where we have to go. I know, talking to a lot of folks, the thoughts of our, our folks becoming Clippers or heading to Portsmouth is pretty distasteful. And I hope the school board hears that from other folks that are in the community that have spoken to me, and hope that we will still move forward and, and look for another solution to our problem, because we do need help at the school. And we need building, we need rooms, and that's where it is. But I don't think, from what I heard from folks in this last week, that sending our kids elsewhere, at least at this point in time, especially Portsmouth Way, is a solution. And I just wanted to share that with you from what I'd heard.
Thank you, Greg.
That's it.
Thanks very much. We're gonna talk about you while you're gone.
That's fine. I can watch it.
Mr. Bauer.
Would you prefer to ask me to participate when you talk about this?
Yeah, what we're gonna do at, um, uh, the superintendent and, uh, Mr. Chase have suggested that we move that discussion up in the agenda. So, folks can go home and watch Survivor or whatever else is on.
Or get a better view from us.
Or get a better view.
The cheap seats.
Get a view where you can turn us off.
Mute is a good thing sometimes.
Mute, yeah. Um, so, moving on to the minutes of the March 8th, 2007 school board meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes, and then we can talk about any changes that need to be made.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion. Any discussion at all?
I have none.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the March 8th, 2007 school board minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I wasn't present.
Okay, Mr. Ransdell abstains, 'cause he was not present. Record me as an aye, so that we have a quorum. Okay, we have non-public minutes?
Sorry. I'll make a motion to accept the non-public minutes for the March 8th, 2007 school board meeting.
In a second.
Thank you. Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, Mr. Ransdell abstains due absence. Why don't we, um, at this point, move up our facilities discussion, and then we'll have Mike's Town Council presentation after that? So, Mr. Bauer, Dr. Bauer, if you're prepared to speak, we're happy to hear you.
Good evening. Um, uh, given the results of the voting, uh, last week, um, I thought, as the chair of the committee, I would, um, just give you some observations. I mean, the committee at this point doesn't have a new purpose, and, and it's up to the board as to what that purpose might be and who you would like to be involved in that. Um, and the committee has not had any further discussions about this, so in some sense, these are my perspectives, coming from having worked on that. Just a couple of observations in terms of potential options at this point. Uh, just an observation, uh, about the vote itself, and maybe a couple of suggestions. This is not a thoroughly thought-out, uh, discussion, but just some things to, to put on the table. Um, in terms of all the discussion we've had, um, I think it might be wise to, uh, because there was a lot of positive feeling around a single campus idea, to see whether there is any way in which we could still achieve that. Um, uh, that had a lot of positive features to it. Um, uh, the issue of, of acreage and the positioning of the land and things of that nature, uh, we'd be facing different constraints now, so I don't know what is still feasible, but I think it's worth taking a look at that again and see what could be done. Um, second, uh, second possible option is, we may wanna go back and look at the golf course again. Uh, was turned down last time. Uh, it's gonna be two years later, situations may have changed, some other issues may come to the fore, and it may be worth kinda thinking about that again. Particularly if we are thinking about just constructing a high school now, instead of a, of both a middle and high school. Third thing, um, although we did a thorough survey of, uh, property in town, leased available property, and, uh, there may be some property owners out there who, uh, weren't thinking about this before, may, uh, have some ideas for us, and may wanna bring that to the board for consideration for possible options for other sites.
So, you're suggesting doing a re-canvass, basically?
Uh, well, particularly if there's some folks out there willing to come to the board, uh, with suggestions who were not previously considered. Or, uh, to really, basically, you know, open the door to re-canvass to see whether there's any possibility of finding other good pieces of property, even though we thought we'd kinda done a good job of that over the last couple of years in terms of looking at the options.
Anyone who meets that description should contact the superintendent's office.
There you go. Um, and, uh, if we, uh, are gonna think about, um, sending kids out of district, uh, part of the issue there is we oughta look, take a very close look at the costs associated with that. Um, I've had a conversation with the superintendent about that a little bit. Uh, that's certainly something that could be done. Uh, it's a lot easier than just, it's a lot easier to say that we can send kids somewhere without thinking about how much it's gonna cost and whether there's actually a place to send them. Um, just, uh, as an observation for how fast things can change, uh, Portsmouth was not even on our radar screen a couple, within the last couple of years until the past couple of months, as even considered option. Um, and Barrington, which is a place that we talked with, just had a school vote fail. So, uh, there's issues associated with, with this, that some of which are under our control, some of which are not. Um, an observation now. Um, uh, I think the most significant thing to look at in terms of the vote was the fact that Article II failed. Article II was, uh, a request for, uh, money to be used to put modular spaces on the campus. Um, and that would've provided us a short-term solution to the overcrowding in the building, um, and some of the teacher shuffling that was currently going on. And, uh, the fact that that, uh, did not get, uh, a significant number of votes suggests that there's quite a few people, uh, who don't believe that there's a problem, or don't wanna believe that there's a problem, despite the evidence, uh, that we know very well. Um, so, uh, the result of that negative vote was, we're gonna have compromises in our curriculum and teacher effectiveness and student learning. Um, and it really disappoints me that that particular, despite everything else, that that particular, uh, article was not supported because of the short-term, um, assistance that would've provided for the problem.
I think there is a simple majority, but not a 60 percent.
It was a simple majority, but not the 60 percent.
My memory of it's correct.
Um, uh, last thing, a couple of suggestions. Um, uh, there seem to be some of the same sorts of, uh, objections coming up, kind of at the last, aside from the land issue and the, uh, uh, that was probably the dominant issue this time. A, a lot of things were being revisited that we had put out good arguments for, uh, and really put out a lot of information for a year ago. Uh, and some things were coming back again that, uh, uh, in some sense, we thought we had countered well and had explained well. Um, so I think part of the task, if we're gonna go forward, is that we've really got to convince people in, in, in town that, um, they need to be listening to, uh, first sources and not to neighbors who might be not well-informed or not listening to something that's been passed through five different people. Um, and there's also, uh, some misrepresentation that, that, uh, that was going on. And, and so, we're fighting against that, and, and if you're, uh, trying to grasp for straws, uh, as to why not to support something, um, there were quite a few straws that could be grasped. And, uh, so, we may need to go back to looking at, uh, doing routine tours, as we did before. Uh, we may wanna consider having, uh, regular, uh, monthly public forums where people can kinda talk these things through, so that it's constantly, uh, in the news and not something that, uh, people just remember again when it's, uh, voting time. Um, and using our web resources, uh, as well as we can, and, and responding to questions and posting frequently asked questions, to try to have answers available for people to go to, um, firsthand, so that, uh, people aren't imagining what the answers to things might be, and, and to indicate that the homework has been done. I mean, we know that, that a lot of homework has been done, and we've countered a lot of our, these arguments, but things keep coming back, we keep getting surprised by stuff. Um, so, those are just some, some suggestions. And again, they're coming from me, based on experience, and, and not as a result of new discussions of the committee. But, um, uh, at least a couple of committee members have, uh, spoken with, are available and willing to continue to work on this issue. The problems have not gone away. Um, we've just delayed them. So, I'm happy to answer questions, if you wanna ask me anything, or whatever.
Questions for Chris. Cliff, do I see you getting ready to speak?
In fact, Chris, no.
Oh.
I, um, thank you for your willingness to continue on in this.
Oh, did you hear me volunteer?
I think I did.
So, Chris, if I?
I think I might be willing to continue. That's if, uh, at the pleasure of the board.
Well, my, Chris, I, I wanna understand, is it, is it your suggestion, in understanding that it's your suggestion that the facilities committee carry on?
Uh, it was important to have that group able to work on things and to do homework. It would be, I mean, there's, there's a significant amount of homework that, that may need to be done and things to be organized, and I think you need a group who can do that. Um, so, I, I guess I am recommending that you consider, uh, recharging the committee, um, and, uh, you know, setting up the membership and, uh, um, and, uh, think about, you know, specifically what you would like to have them do as, as you have the last couple of times.
Um, I'm gonna go out on a limb, and if you guys object, let me know. I, I guess my thought at this point, and it's only my thought at this point, is to have a meeting at the facilities committee, understanding that anybody, this is not a fixed, carved-in-the-stone group. People who are wanting to get, wanting to get involved are always, always welcome to get involved, is have a meeting of this group in the near future. Um, and let's talk about the charge and, and.
That might be appropriate, yeah.
And let's have it, have it a public meeting with everybody invited, uh, whether you wanna participate or just wanna listen. And, uh, let's sit down and talk about the charge, and let's talk about everybody's perspective, what needs to be done at this point, and then thrash it out that way, and we can come up with.
Certainly a reasonable approach.
It's unusual for me, but I'm trying it.
Okay.
If that makes sense to you, then I'll, I guess I'll ask Kathy to, if you can canvass your group and see if we can do it. I like to do it in the next 30 to 45 days, if possible.
Okay. I'll, uh, get in touch with folks, see who wants to have the discussion, and, uh, figure out how to get organized.
And everybody should know, this is gonna be a public, publicly posted, hopefully we'll find a slide for it on Channel 13, and everyone is invited. And we'll go from there. Does that make sense to everyone?
Absolutely.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you, Chris, very much. Thank you for everything.
Does this topic remain open for discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it does.
I do have, uh, some thoughts that, yes, we must continue the work of the facilities committee, um, as we move forward in this. We, we must continue to move forward. There's no doubt that something needs to be done. I think that, uh, part of the issue is that something, if I can draw a analogy, there's been great, good work done, but I think sometime, it feels a little like, or maybe the community feels this way, that if we have a, a car with a problem, we replaced a part, and that didn't fix the car, so we replaced another part. And I'm, I'm looking at whether we have enough community input to draw these large, continue to draw larger conclusions, whether it's issues of a new building, a campus, two buildings, one building, tuitioning students out, all of these various things are in people's minds, and at some level, they're in play, as this process works its way out. And I don't know that we have enough data on enough people's feeling in town to, you know, just to continue just the facilities process. I do believe it's an important process, but I think we need to establish another, more broad-based committee that is charged specifically with sharing factual data with the community and gathering factual data from the community. Gathering those, those people's feelings and the way the community feels about these different issues. Because I could, I could feel very strongly that if we put tuitioning kids out on the ballot next year as an example, we would have a significant number of people that would be, feel very strongly about, "Well, then we're giving away the heart and soul of New Market. We're losing part of our identity and our tradition." And that, you know, that would become the next big battle cry. Rather than, if that is on the ballot, if it is, it should be because we've done enough homework that we know that 65% of this community supports that option, not because it's the next thing we're going to try, or, you know, another piece of property or something like this. Um, I would like to recommend that we establish another working team to, uh, look at the overall process, not to be confused with the facilities committee. I do believe their work continues to be important. Uh, I think that, uh, the charge of the team, to undertake things that determine the desires of the community regarding the development of school facilities for the next, you fill in the blank, 20, 40, 50, 60, whatever years those are. And I think we work with the public to share facts and information about available options, and we elicit specific feedback about those. And public hearings are important, they would, must continue to be a part of what we do. However, public hearings in a town of, I don't know, 8,000 roughly?
Nine.
That draw 50 to 100 people probably don't give us an excellent cross-section of community feeling. Because, you know, the supporters are there, everyone has their own opinion. I think we need to develop data. Uh, we could, that team should review past information and, and analyze it for current applicability. There were some surveys done in the past, I know that. I don't think I lived in town yet when those surveys were done, however. Um, those would have some value, do we need to do another one or more?
Those surveys had very poor response rate, by the way.
How did, well, and that's.
Something to look at.
That is something to look at. And do we, I would propose you do a survey, you send it to every household, you send it with a self-addressed stamp envelope, so somebody can put it back in their mailbox. Does that cost money? Yeah. But if we wanna know what's going on, I think we're going to have to invest some money in understanding people's desires. I mean, I've written up a quick thoughts on this, but that's it in a nutshell. I think we can better inform ourselves in the process and engage more people in the process by both eliciting information, and if there is, if there's a fact sheet, like Mr. Motors, Murdo's letter from the state that states the state's opinion, no pun intended, about the condition of the building, why wouldn't we mail that to everybody? It's not something we're putting together because it's our opinion, it was, you know, from Mr. Murdo at the State Department of Ed. And I think we need to start mailing out those things, getting them into people's hands, because I don't believe we can simply rely on a widespread attendance at public hearing or, you know, a hit and miss, you know, did someone happen to see something on Thursday night on Channel 13, to really inform people and elicit that feedback. So, I would, you know, there's some thoughts here, and digest it as you will, and, uh, that is my suggestion, that we, we form a more broad-based committee, and we, we build on the work the facilities committee has done, but really flesh out and explore all the issues that people think are out there.
Very good for us, thank you. Excellent suggestions. Do you have a copy?
I, I, it's on my computer, so I'm okay.
Oh, okay. Okay, very good. Anyone else? Hi, Paul, welcome.
Hi, sorry I'm late.
That's okay.
What are we, what are we doing?
We were talking about you primarily. No, uh, Chris gave a brief presentation with some thoughts and observations, uh, on the facilities process, and Forrest was, um, proposing some ideas for us to consider as well. Other than that, we've just done, done the minutes and the pledge and the mission statement.
Got you.
Uh, this is excellent for us, and I, I, we do obviously wanna have an opportunity to take a peek at it, and, um.
I really, um.
Appreciate the effort that.
And, uh, the, um, just so folks know, was, um, some of the, I obviously haven't had much time to read, but, um, the suggestion is to have a kind of a working team that includes, uh, parents, uh, citizens that don't have children in the school, business owners. It's a great cross-sectional group of people, and, um, I, I really think you're on the right track, that, um, we need to come at it from a little bit of a different angle as well.
Did you have a, did you have a, Forrest, did you have a suggestion for identifying these people, or?
No, that, actually, if you look at the questions on the second page, I mean, that is something we would have to consider, is how are the people identified, of course, you know, by volunteer, and look for that cross-section. I'll be honest, I would call and invite some of the people that have been vehemently opposed, and I'd invite them to participate.
You're coming dangerously close to being put in charge of this process. Personally, I think that'd be an excellent idea.
No, I have nothing to say, I'm just, the, the dead air is.
Sorry.
Making me nervous.
We're gonna, we are gonna have a facilities discussion later in the agenda, is that?
What I suggested right before you came in is that we, uh, Chris has suggested that the facilities committee carry on in some respect, and then my thought on that was to have another meeting of them in, in the near future, in the 30 to 45 days, and everyone's invited, and we throw this and every other idea on the table, and thrash it around that way, and, obviously, a public meeting, and with everyone invited to attend.
Okay.
'Cause right now, we're just kinda throwing out ideas. We're just kinda brainstorming, which is sometimes not a pretty process, but, but this is, this is excellent, this is a lot of work. Thank you, Forrest. And, um, maybe we can have, send copies of this around and make this available to folks if they wanna take a look at it. Uh, but I haven't had a chance to really absorb it, to have meaningful comments on it right now. So, any further either comments on what Forrest has, has suggested, or other ideas that folks wanna come forward with at this time? Okay, then let's take this, let's circulate it around, make it available to folks. I guess we can't, I don't know if we're gonna mail this out to everybody, but.
Uh, it wouldn't, I probably wouldn't mail that one out.
Yeah, but it will be available for folks to look at, and, uh, we'll get it around the facilities committee, and, uh, appreciate the hard work for us, thank you very much. Um, are we, anyway, so, is any other thoughts in the facilities process at this point? Obviously, this is gonna be an ongoing discussion, this is not gonna be tonight or never, it's going to be an ongoing discussion, so thank you. Okay. Uh, before I go on, I should also say, it's nice to have a lot of our teachers here, thanks for coming out. Uh, Mike Plasky, what is the town council up to these days?
Talking about you.
Question that's pretty high on most people's thoughts, what is the town council up to these days?
Well, there's a lot of stuff going on, we're still looking at the water situation. Uh, last night, we talked about bringing the water ban down to level two, which is odd and even watering, the odd number of houses, water on the odd days, even on the even days. Um, strict monitoring of the wells, of course, during, so that we can keep control of the water situations, don't become seriously short. Um, let's see.
Have we been holding our own with water, or how are we doing?
Yes, we are holding our own with water, and the water exploration is going very, very well. Pun intended.
Can you, uh, can you talk about areas where we're looking now?
I cannot.
Okay.
Um, Channel 13 Committee has still not gotten off the ground yet, because there's still vacancies on the board. Um, all I have so far are the IT person from the school side, the IT person from the administration side, one citizen, and myself. And there's, I believe we're supposed to have one more person from the school side.
Well, we were under the impression that there was gonna be a school board rep on this committee, and that it was gonna be Linda.
Okay.
We're getting some next messages on that.
It was not, it was not clearly defined.
Oh, okay.
And to get this going, I, my impression was it was going to be school staff.
I thought, well, I think our impression was that this was gonna be a joint, a committee, a joint committee of the town council and the school board, um, and that, so that there would be a town council member and a school board member, and then, you know, um, employees of the town, employees of the.
To the extent that we can really request that we have a school board representative to this committee, we are making that request in order to add, bring clarity to the process, and Linda would like to do it.
Okay, that's, that works, and I don't think any of the other councilors having a problem with that.
Okay.
Don't speak too soon.
I will be getting in touch with meeting time and working all that out. Um, the other ongoing issue between the school board and the town council is impact fees. Uh, Mr. Dixon wrote a letter back to Superintendent Murphy, uh, with specific requests for your request for withdrawal of impact fees. Also, uh, we just received a huge packet, the methodologies, methodologies for. for calculation of impact fees, which is going to be some exciting reading, I'm sure, so that we can go through this process correctly, so that nothing is done wrong. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a difficult process. That's about all I have.
Any questions for Mike? Before I go on a mini tirade, any questions for Mike at all?
Not a mini tirade.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Could I comment to two things? Mike, the TV station, you're right, there was very little activity, so I directed our IT guy, one of our IT guys, Matt Seaton. Matthew has two staff members, the media director at the high school, also one of our business ed teachers to participate. We have a parent and a student along with Matt, and they're moving forward. They met with Mr. Poulain, and they tentatively set up a date of April twelfth at seven o'clock in, here in the council chambers to begin the work around the TV station. So, apparently, that message didn't get to you, but that's, I just, I received an email, actually, yesterday and today from Matt. So, we're moving ahead, the committee's been formed, and Linda, I'll get this, I'll send you an email tomorrow with the dates.
Thank you.
The Town Council also appointed Richard Alpern to that committee.
Great. I'm assuming that Matt knows that, because I didn't get directly involved, so he and Doug Poulain were, you know, trying to help organize that.
I'll give you my email address at the end of the meeting.
Okay. And I'll make sure that Matt knows, gets that back to you. Okay. The other comment I wanted to make, Mr. Hawkins, was is that I did, in fact, get a letter from Mr. Dixon. I didn't share that with you tonight because I forwarded all of the information. I had written a request for two hundred sixty thousand dollars that's available to the school district that is currently being held from impact fees that have been assessed. The Town Council received our request indicating the reasons why we asked for that money, the enrollments, as you know, that we did research, and we went back to the early sixties and tracked the enrollments of our students along with the programmatical needs of our district. And I put that in, in a request to the Town Council. They asked that we, that it be reviewed relative to the request, meeting the conditions of the ordinance. And I asked our legal counsel, Barbara Lohman, to review my request and the town ordinance to ensure that we are in compliance with the rules and regulations of that ordinance. I haven't received a response back from Barbara yet, but I anticipate within a week or so she will put together a response on your behalf to the Town Council, so that we can access two hundred and sixty thousand dollars that's been earmarked for the schools.
Anything else for Mike? I guess my feeling is that although, as much as I enjoy seeing lawyers get paid to write opinions, that there's two hundred and sixty thousand dollars that's sitting in an account that has, that has the school district's name on it, that could be applied for the benefit of kids in education in the community. And to the extent that it's a political hot potato for the Town Council, I suppose that's, the Town Council's prerogative. But I would, I would suggest that to the extent that there's any doubt about the expenditure of the fund, that the doubt be resolved in favor of the school district and in favor of using the money for the purpose for which the account was created. And then, after that, let the chips fall where they may. So, to the extent that that is a message that's useful to bring back to the Town Council, that's just my opinion, that's not the board's opinion. That is my opinion, and if board members feel differently, they're welcome to say so. But my, in my view, Town Council has custody of these funds for the benefit of the school district, and if they're not gonna expend it for the benefit of the school district, they should, they should have a very clear reason why. Thank you.
It's my impression that the impact fees aren't just a broad-based, okay, we collect the money, this much goes to the school, this much goes to DPW, et cetera. The impact has to be shown, is my understanding. I have got some more reading to do on this, and if I am incorrect on that, I will stand corrected.
No, I think you're correct. And in our view, the impact has been demonstrated. So, we don't know, you know, so, all we're saying is that if the council is gonna make a decision not to apply the money, when we feel the impact has been demonstrated, then, in my view, there has to be a clear accounting as to why that is.
My general feeling, when the council discussed this and brought it back to the board, was that the impact has to come specifically from, I'm just gonna use Bryant Rock for an example, just because it's well-known, and you have to show what the impact to the School Board was from that Bryant Rock development. If there's no impact from that, those fees aren't available. That is my impression, my understanding of how this works.
Yeah.
Of any other development, you have to show the impact on that development to the School Board, not broad-based development.
Well, as I say, I feel like the impact has been demonstrated, and as I say, to the extent that there's doubt, I don't want us to be held to a standard of perfection, because I don't think that's productive, and I don't think it's consistent with the purpose for which these accounts were created. I'm just saying that to the extent that there is doubt, I'm asking, only on behalf of myself, not on behalf of the School Board, that that doubt be resolved in favor of helping the school district accomplish its mission. That's all I'm suggesting. I'm not, I'm not asking that the law be violated, certainly not. Okay, so, and as you know, and as the council knows, there is a clock that is ticking. And I'm afraid that these debates, these sort of academic debates over what can and can't be used for impact fees will, in themselves, become an end. That's all I'm asking, is that there be consciousness of that, because there's only so much the school district can do. And I'm asking for myself that you guys please bear that in mind.
I will bring that back to the council.
Thank you. New Market Food Service Annual Report to the Board, Mrs. Dodds.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the folks who are listening at home and wondering what we're doing, Mrs. Dodds is handing us a Nutrients Breakdown Summary Report showing, I think, the nutritional conduct of our content of the food that we serve, is that right?
Exactly.
Thank you.
The, this is a nutrient breakdown summary report for the month of February. And what I've presented you with is one week's worth of nutrient analysis. This first page is the outcome of that week. On each page after that is listed what was served that day and the nutrition breakdown for each day, just to show you that was the food that we had, and that was the breakdown. And the pie chart that I gave you shows that our saturated fat was six percent for the week, fifteen percent of total fat, and nineteen percent of carbohydrate, of protein, and the sixty percent of carbohydrate. And I do have a packet on the table there for the whole month, the school calendar month of February, if anyone is interested in that. But that's basically been the biggest project going on, is trying to do this nutrient analysis. And it's quite a job, but, and we're fitting within the requirements. And also, in an article in, it's an online newspaper, Tuesday morning, that New Hampshire ranks third for the healthiest school lunches in the United States. And that says a lot. I have just returned from Washington DC. I am president-elect of the State School Food Service Association, and we spoke with our senators for, I have that piece down there, too, that we took to them, the things that we are trying to get, which is naturally more money, more money for vegetables, they're expensive. We have introduced more vegetables this year, but again, we're limited with the costs. And I have been working with Nathan Duklos in the Farm to School Program, and that's been an exciting program. We've been working for several years now, and it's growing. There are more people getting involved each, each year we come together. But this is basically what we've been working on this year. And also, the snacks, everybody wonders, you know, gosh, when am I gonna serve a snacks that's healthy? Well, they've come up with an A-list of healthy snacks and beverages. It's quite lengthy, thirty-some-odd pages, but it gives you the nutrient breakdown for every single snack and healthy drink that there is out there, and we try to stick by this. It's the little bible of treats.
Where, Mrs. Dodds, I see targets. Where is the source of the targets? Is this a federal thing, a state thing?
This is the programs thing. That's the best I can tell you. I honestly don't know. It's, the program is NutraKids. And I took a two-day course on it, but it also took help from a registered dietitian and another food service director to help me through this. And...
There's a program called...
The most important things were, we didn't have any shot falls or overages.
This information's really great, but I have to ask the question, and I know that every parent out there who makes meals for their kids is wondering, if you're serving more vegetables, how do we get the kids to like the vegetables?
You don't. You don't.
Is there, I mean, how do they do with it? Do they seem to eat them?
They're common, though. They're coming slowly. We have the fresh fruit out there all the time. And it's, and what we've really done is, not thanks to Nathan, yeah, thanks to Nathan. And as far as apples and peaches and stuff like that, pears, there's a small one. And you know, kids will take a small apple because it's, it's not too much for them. It's kid-sized. But even the high school kids will take a small apple as to a big one. And, and they're doing really well with that, that fruit bowl. It is disappearing. And they, I have kind of an unwritten rule, any child that wants extra vegetables can have extra vegetables. The girls know that, or fruit. And we have a few, but they're, they're learning, they're coming. It's gonna be a slow process, it's going to be a whole new process with the government even, because we've gotta get the vegetables. We can't afford the veg, fresh vegetables. So, the piece that we just entered into in Washington was to ask for money for vegetables, because there are pilot programs out there. And if they offer them free, the kids are taking them. They're finding that the kids are taking them. They have them in, and I did just purchase a refrigerator, a kid-sized refrigerator, waiting for the stand for it now to be on. And the elementary school will be allowed to have snacks. They will have to purchase, but there'll be fresh fruits and vegetables in that, cut up for them. And...
That's good. I thank you for that. I appreciate your efforts and getting our kids...
Linda, could you share the high school and the vegetables and how you, the salads and all that, that the youngsters are choosing up there?
Oh, yes. At the high school, the salad combos are a big part of school lunch, which is, and we have several different kinds of salads, which is a Mandarin salad and a garden salad with chicken or proteins on it. And we also have the apple and, what is it, McDonald's has, with yogurt, apples and yogurt. And then, well, we can't use walnuts, so, you know, we use cheese on it. And those have been going over very well. I started it on a regular basis at the elementary school, and it didn't, it didn't fly down there. So, we went back to the most popular salad that they liked when we have it now. The salad combo, we call it, which comes with whole wheat bread, the salad, your milk, and fruit. And that's a complete lunch, because it has the protein on it. At the high school, the same thing. And like today, we ran out of salads, but my girls were quickly back there making more salad combos for them, and that's a good thing. We like it when that happens. It's not a problem.
How do we do in...
Getting this little refrigerator, this little kid-sized refrigerator that they can go up to and pick out what they'd like to have for a snack, a healthy snack.
Linda, how are we doing with children who have some kind of special dietary requirement for...
Everybody so far has been, there are more in the elementary school, and Linda does a great job down there, Linda Hoppe. You know, she's got it right down to a fine tune to what, who can have what. And some can't have carbohydrates at all, or have to have a certain amount of carbohydrates, or the food allergies. And it seems like when they get to the high school, while we take care of the vegetarians, we have some kids with special interests, and we have some prescriptions.
Yes.
It's what they're called, from the doctors, for what they can have and what they can't have. And we follow those to the T.
Very good, thank you.
Linda, could you share with the board how your new automated system is working at the high school?
The POS system is working pretty darn good. It's, we still have some glitches and things to learn on it, and I can't wait to meet the infamous Jack. And, but it's, went a lot more smoothly than I thought it would. The problem is the kids bringing their, their student ID cards. They won't. They refuse. And it, it just slows the program right down, because you really need to, to have, they have to swipe their card.
Yeah, maybe you should back up and give us a little bit of an overview of how the POS, it's point of sale, right, of how that, how that system works.
They have their ID cards that they're given each year. And you can, if you lose them, they can be replaced for a certain amount of money, though. And...
James is looking for his now, because he's gotta get lunch tomorrow.
They just scan, they scan the card, and you just hit a couple of buttons and they're in. Parents can prepay. Some parents will pay twenty dollars, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars on their account. And as they use that card, it's drawn off that account. The parents can call us and we can tell them, they say, you know, my kid came home hungry. How come? You know, well, he hasn't eaten since last October. Not with us, anyway. But, you know, and he's, was able to eat, but he chose not to. And we can pretty much tell them what they've had to eat. We send, we have a form that we sent home, can this money be used for snacks to parents? And it is to be signed twice in two different places by the parents. And that way, we know, and they know, that the money that they send in is going for what they wanted to pay for, the lunches, or if they don't care, lunches and snacks. But they do, we do have to come up with a way to get the kids to bring, they just, they would, we try to say, well, you wouldn't forget your driver's license, or, you know, when you learn to drive, but this, you don't seem to care. And sometimes they do have it on them, they just won't take it out.
So what do you do when, when someone shows up looking for lunch and they don't have their card?
We have, slow the line right down, and go in manually and type in their name, and it comes up. So lots of times, we ask them to go to the end of the line if they don't have their card, because it's, it's required. And it holds the other kids up that do. And it holds the other kids up that do. But that is the only, only drawback.
Is it just that it's not cool, or what?
I don't have a clue, because some, so many of the high school kids think it's really cool. You know, they didn't, that and I, at lunch going up to two dollars, because we had technology. You know, I mean, they, they just, that was the focus. Wow, we're finally coming into the, into this century.
Linda, do only the children or the students that, whose parents prepay, use that card, or do all students?
They can pay cash.
Right. But do they use the card? If you pay cash, do you also use the card?
No.
And I'm wondering if it's something that you could do, so that if parents do want to monitor, you know, parents who send money in on a weekly basis, you know, because maybe they can't pay it from...
They're in there. If they, if they send it in on a weekly basis, they're in, in the program.
Okay. Okay. How about on a daily?
On a daily basis.
If you pay on a daily basis, but you want to know that your kid is using that two dollars that you gave them, you can't...
Then that information is not going to be there without the card.
All right.
But if they have a card, you could do a printout showing us what our kids have purchased?
Yep.
And when?
What days, what they, what days they ate, what days they didn't.
Is James one of the people who holds up the line? Because I'll rap his knuckles right now if he is.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I have not used the system. I bring my lunch to school.
Having worked at a number of different high schools that have implemented a POS system, no, in no place I've ever worked have they carried the cards willingly. One of the options is to install a keypad and make it a PIN number. The kids are more likely to, you know, punch in that PIN number and keep working through...
I have mentioned that to James, because I did have some.
That is an option.
Yes.
You can also do fingerprint recognition, which I know my son uses an Oyster.
That's expensive.
We're thinking of going to an alternative, because as Linda suggested, the IDs go in the laundry, through the washing machine, dryer.
I've purchased a number of extra IDs.
This year?
Uh-huh.
This year?
Yeah. At least one for each of them, I think.
I've got a couple of questions, getting back to the nuts and bolts of these, these printouts.
Uh-huh.
The total fat, saturated fat is obviously a very popular topic in the news, where everyone's trying to work, work those numbers down. Trans fat is one thing I note that's not specifically listed here. I was curious...
Most anything we use is no trans fats.
Okay.
That's snack...
That's just kind of a given.
A given.
Okay, great.
Where, um...
The, there's percents of targets for calories and vitamin A, C, et cetera. But I'm noticing also that there's targets for total fat and saturated fat, and, but I don't see anything in the shortfall or overage category, columns, in situations where, for example, my all-time favorite school lunch, the chicken patty on a bun, it's 31.16% total fat, a percent of calories. But that's not listed as being over the 30%. And I was curious if there's no standard for that? Is that why that is, or...
I'll have to look into that. I have a telephone connection to the person at NutraKids for many of the questions that you can bring up, and I bring to her, and I would bring that up to her. I also, I also have some questions with this. This is newly done. And there's just some things, but it was explained to me, even though it says it's over, like, total fat, 31.16%, it's such a minimal amount that it still brings it within. I mean, to me, over is over, but, in my eyes, but...
Right. Well, my understanding is the, maybe it's the, I don't know who makes the rules, but it's a weekly average, isn't it?
It's a weekly average.
So if one day you're 31%, the next day you're 29% for the week, you're probably going to meet the goal.
Yep. Like on this, we did. It was 29.55% total fat.
Now, the, there's a category, total fat, and a separate one for saturated fat, both on these charts and on the pie chart. Is total fat, on the pie chart, you've got a total of 21% fat in your green and blue wedge that you have there? Is, I don't, I'm not sure, I'm not, I don't follow the nutritional labeling real closely, but the, is the, is the total fat represented, include the saturated fat piece?
Yes.
So there's another 6% of, I don't know, of...
That would be 21. If I read that right, that'd be 21. Oh, no. Yeah, I don't... Which is still less than the 30.
Right, but the...
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think that that total fat is, I think saturated fat is something separate.
Okay.
Total fat is, is another thing. I don't think it does include saturated fat.
Okay.
Don't ask me, don't ask me what, but...
Typically on nutritional labels, though, total fat is just that.
Yes.
The combination of saturated and unsaturated fats within a food item. So it is, I understand where Cliff's not seeing that connection. That total fat is, may not be the accurate term for that category.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and...
Yeah, right.
The, the last point I'd like to make is that this is great information, and I'm wondering, is there any reason why we can't post this for every meal?
It's in my future to do this, to be able to do this.
Okay. What can we do to help facilitate that?
My technology experience is weak, and, but I'm sure I could gather someone to...
James has been working with Mrs. Dodds in terms of all the technology and doing, helping with the training and putting the new point of service in place. She referred to the infamous Jack, and Jack is our consultant, who we've never seen in person. All of our dealings are over the phone with Jack. I mean, it's, he does, you call Jack and he's at the, you know, he guides you through, because he's out in, I don't know, Ohio or somewhere, I believe.
Witness protection program?
Yeah, witness protection. So, but Jack is coming to Newmarket to do some training with our staff, our secretaries, and so he'll be here to assist Linda as she goes to the next level. But that is part of her goals, to be able to provide, we think it should be posted on the web. So when she posts her menus, that she'll just list the fats, the protein, and the carbs for their meals.
It probably won't be the whole, you know, all of it.
It won't be as detailed, because that would be, I think, too much. But the basic pieces that you're seeing in the pie chart is what we'd like to post with the menus on our webpage.
And if, you know, if we're doing this once for each meal, which I'm imagining needs to be done in order to meet those weekly nutritional requirements, in the interim, can we have something as simple as a binder that has, you know, an alphabet order by, you know, the entree?
Absolutely. That's, that's a fantastic idea.
I don't want to wait until we've invented the perfect delivery system for the information. I want to just be able to, you know, if a student, you know, if we can, you know, we're in the, in the education business, if we can educate about the food that they're eating, that's, you know, awfully critical.
Fantastic idea.
I would think too, that, Linda, and maybe I'm not understanding this correctly, but I would think it's probably important to make it clear that the nutrients breakdown is predicated on eating the entire lunch, right?
That's exactly, yeah, that's exactly true.
I don't mean to belabor this vegetables point. It's a sore point, wouldn't they, obviously?
Cheese.
That's true, I mean, it's significant.
Cheese cures all vegetables.
Yeah, all right. Anyway, that's, that is correct, right?
You are absolutely correct. Yes.
We should probably note that.
Yes.
You won't get the nutritional benefit unless you eat the food.
That's right. If you eat the dessert only, the protein's not coming.
Mrs. Dodds, going along with what Paul just said, how much do you monitor what a student isn't eating by what is being brought back and thrown away?
Well, because you can't make them eat.
Correct.
But I walk around a lot and find kids that aren't eating at all, and ask why. And some, they may have a silly reason, I'll say, get up there and go have a lunch, you know, we'll worry about it later. And, but, we have the gaggers, and we, they just, a lot of them will taste, and will try, but if they're not eating it at home, they're not going to eat it at school.
Mike, I might be able to answer your question. Our staff, the paraprofessionals and our classroom teachers, monitor the youngsters' food, especially at lunch. I mean, I think you could ask any classroom teacher who's eating and who's not, and they have a very good idea. So we are monitoring that. And when, in fact, youngsters don't have lunch or aren't taking lunch, then our staff reports that to the building principals, who then find out what's going on. And in some cases, the family may need some additional assistance, want, you know, be eligible for some help for lunches. So we go through a lot of things. We also work with a school nurse.
My, my thought process was not specifically who's eating and who's not, but what is being eaten and what is not.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
In other words, use a pepper jack cheese today, just for an example, and you see tons of it coming back, not being eaten. Obviously, you're not going to do pepper jack cheese.
Never do that again.
As just a plain cheddar cheese, yes, there's not very much of it coming back, so that's a good item to serve. That's, that was my question.
And, and we do try new things, and, but you have to try them with the kids at least seven times before they're going to decide to accept them or not. That's some study had done, you know, had come to that conclusion. And you can't just offer it once. You've got to offer it more than once. A new, new thing, a new vegetable, a new fruit, a new casserole. They don't like casseroles. They like their meat and their potatoes and everything's separate. Shepherd's pie is history now, but give me hamburger, potatoes, and corn.
Yeah. Thank you.
One, one quick question. Linda, the, the fruits with each of these meals, are those fresh fruits, or are they...
We, we've had more fresh fruit this year when we can, because we live in the northeast, and at this time of year, it's very expensive. Oranges went in one week from nineteen dollars to forty dollars. And sometimes, I'll say, well, it's on the menu, we have to have it. But I'm really careful to order them again at that price.
But some things, even in the northeast, like carrot sticks, should be available.
Carrots.
And that's something that is going to be kind of packaged for kids in this new refrigerator system.
Yes. Carrots and apples and, cucumbers and carrots are a big thing in, they could have little packets of dip if they needed. You know, the low-fat ranch is what they seem to like for a dip with them. And if we can get them into them, we're trying. I wish somebody had the magic wand.
Anything else? Thank you, Linda, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duklos, I have a vivid memory of you at that meeting in Dover about the adequacy in education. I spoke immediately after you.
I'll be much more brief, concise, shall we say. So my name's Nathan Duklos. I run the New Hampshire Farm-to-School Program. It's based out of the University of New Hampshire, out of the Office of Sustainability there. I apologize for my attire. I work for an ambulance as well, and I rushed from there over here, so. So you have a packet in front of you, you should all have a packet in front of you, that is going to give you a little overview about the Farm-to-School Program. It's also going to give you a bit of information on our new project. I'll give you a little quick history, so you don't have to sit there and read this right now, and you can read it at your leisure. New Hampshire Farm-to-School was started about three and a half years ago with a USDA SARE grant, and it was funded for three years through that grant to do research and development on what does it take to get local, fresh, healthy food into school cafeterias for school kids, and then to do educational programming around the idea of buying locally, eating healthy, and sustainability. That's how it was founded. It started with apples and cider as the product that we were using. I came into it a year in, so when it began, I wasn't there. But they began with apples and cider. Has a strong New Hampshire connection, has a strong educational connection. Also, if you talk to Linda, it's an easy product to put into a cafeteria. An apple is self-contained. All you have to do is wash it and put it out, in some cases, didn't even have to wash it. Same with cider. Came in the pints and it could just be sold. The other end of the program is the, sort of the bi-local idea, and supporting your communities. And so these apples that we were getting into the schools were a smaller, they're called 140 apples, it means 140 of them go into a case. And they were a small apple that the farmers can't sell, or if they do sell them, they get a very low price for them. So we found a market for these apples, because, like Linda said, the small apples, the kids eat the whole thing instead of half of it, especially in the elementary level. The other person was, there aren't any stickers on them when they were packaged, so stickers didn't end up all over the schools. And so we found a market for these, we found the farmers with the apples, and we found a market for the apples, and we connected them. We started out after the first year with about 70 schools. After the second year, we were about 230 schools in the state. When we finished the grant, which was last July, we had over 370 schools in the state that were buying local products. And I say local products because it had expanded in those three years from just apples and cider the first year to all sorts of things, lettuce and water and other vegetables, and bread, and honey, depending on the school district and the area of the state that you were in. So it's expanded tremendously. That project was run out of my office, but was set up through a distribution system using distributors the schools were already using. So Mark Saunders Produce over in Somersworth already was distributing to a large number of schools in the seacoast. Black River Produce over in the western part of the state, North Country, they're delivering already. What we did was just get local products onto those trucks. So that food service directors, all they would have to do, since they're ordering apples anyway, was just select New Hampshire apples. And they would get New Hampshire apples and New Hampshire cider into their schools. So in that manner, we were able to get fresh fruit, as well as support the local economy and the local farmers. This new project that we're working on, which you'll find a letter in your packet, is funded through the New Hampshire Chedle Foundation, through the Piscataqua region, to work with 10 SICO school districts, Newmarket being one of them. Schools that, some of them had a connection with Farm-to-School, some of them were, were new to the program, to see what it takes, since we had a, sort of a large distribution process that involved a middleman, but we wanted to see what it would take for schools and school districts and food service directors to purchase directly from the farmer, directly from a New Hampshire producer, if that's feasible, if it's possible, if they even wanted to do it. So that's what we've been working on this year. The other program is still in place, and it still runs. We run maintenance on it. The nice thing is, the apple growers took over that, that side of it, and the distributors took over the distribution side, and they just run. We just do the educational and the support piece of it now. So this new project, which I, I'm actually, I brought my email with me today, because I'm, I'm very excited about it. Just yesterday, I got final confirmation from a farmer, we've been working since the fall on this, from a farmer in Southampton. His name's Andre Cantelmo. He's with Heron Pond Farm. And he is going to be the farmer we're going to be working with, or one of the farmers we're going to be working with, to provide local products to the schools, those 10 districts. He does, he has 30 acres of land, and he grows lettuce and peppers and cucumbers and tomatoes and all sorts of products. He also sells already to the Chelsea markets, where most of the distributors are going to get their produce as it is. So he is already connected in with the distribution side, as well as with food service. So the price is in the range that food service can pay for it. The distribution is in, in, already set up, and I just made the phone calls yesterday to let everyone know it's a go. So that's, that's sort of the purchasing side. And you guys can ask me questions in a moment. I'll just get through the education. The other piece of it is the education side. What we try to do is we try to get schools and districts and school-age children connected to their community, their state, and the food that they're eating, to make the cafeteria more than just a place where people go at 10:30 to 11:15 every day, or whatever the lunch period is, to make it a learning environment, so that when they walk into that cafeteria, the food that they're eating has a story and has an edu... the food that they're eating has a story and has an educational purpose, just like any other classroom. So we do a lot of work with food service directors to bring in educational materials into the classroom, to promote Farm to School and the idea of sustainability and buying local in the classroom. And then we created resources for teachers. My wife's a teacher. She teaches second grade, and if I ever were to create a program that required her to add something into her day, she's in Somersworth, so she's part of the program, I would be sleeping on the couch. So what we did was we created a program where we gathered resources, materials, information, lesson plans, curriculum, so that teachers, if they're interested in any of the ideas surrounding Farm to School, sustainability, ecology, the environment, can take that material from our website or from the links we post and integrate it into any class, K through 12, math, science, English, home ec., you name it, into their classroom and what they're teaching already. Let it be up to them. So that's how we designed it. That's Farm to School in a nutshell. There's a lot more, but that's where we're at. I just have to say a last couple of things, and you guys can ask me questions. One is, I have to commend Linda, as was the other food service directors we work with. In the years that I've been doing this, food service is probably the, one of the toughest jobs in the school district, that is probably one of the least appreciated jobs in general. I came into this knowing nothing more about food service than what I knew going to school, and that basically was I hated the food. And so, learning about it as I went, I found out the, sort of the intricacies of food service. And they do the most with the least that I have seen anybody do. The other thing is that we try to create, if there's a sort of a general impression that we try to create, we try to create an idea that a kid will come into the school, and Linda gives them a salad, and it's got, you know, "Get smart, eat local" says next to the salad, and it says, "This lettuce was grown at Heron Pond Farm in Southampton, New Hampshire." And it's fantastic. It's fresh and it's nutritious. And they go home and they tell their parents, "I just had the greatest salad at school. It was wonderful. You know, do you think we could go visit that farm stand?" And they go to the farm stand, and they buy some lettuce, and they see some peppers there as well. They have those peppers. They're fantastic. They go back to the school. Now they have this connection with Linda and with the other cafeteria workers. And they say, "Hey, Mrs. Dodd, do you think we could get peppers from that same place you got that lettuce from?" You know, we work it out. We see what we can do. Linda checks into it. Maybe they get peppers. Now, we've created this circle where they're getting the healthy food. There's an education. They're supporting the community. They're supporting agriculture in the state. And, you know, there's just a great circle of learning that's going on. So that's what we do.
Thank you. Before we open the floor to questions, I'm just going to say that folks at home can look at www.nhfarmtoschool.org for more information. Questions for Mr. Duklos? Comments?
I think it's an awesome program. It's terrific, being connected to, I mean, it's another way to connect with the community, and there's so many very valuable ideas being served. It's just, it seems tremendous. Is, I guess, what can we do to help you, I guess is the only...
Oh, you opened it. Oh, good. Okay.
I told you. You go to Heron Farm, or whatever it is.
That's right.
Buy the lettuce and the peppers.
You go to the, so here's my, I've been wanting to present to school boards since I started this, since I came into the program, mostly because when I came in, we were working with distributors and farmers and trying to get into the schools. And I came in and I went to the food service directors. They're the ones purchasing. They're the ones making the decision. So that's where I started with. Once I had that working, the purchasing, then I went to principals. But principals can only do so much. So school boards is my next goal, superintendents and school boards. So what can you do? My greatest hope is that, my greatest hope would be that there becomes a policy, a policy in the district that says, "Let's buy local. Let's buy as much local as we can possibly buy, the fresh, healthy fruits and vegetables from our New Hampshire farmers that we can get into that school." Short of that, my goal would be the support for Linda to do as much as she can. If it can't be policy, ultimately, I'm headed to Concord to make it a policy that we fund buying local for our cafeterias, but that we just give the support to our food service directors. And we say, "This is something we believe in. This is something that's good for our kids. This is something that's good for our schools and our communities. We want you to pursue this, and we give you the okay to go ahead and do that." Now, I know Linda has been doing a lot with that, but, you know, one school board says it, and I go to talk to the next school board. It's much easier for me to talk to the next school board, and then it's easier, and pretty soon, the whole state's buying local.
Nathan, you know, I appreciate your presentation, and generally, I think it does sound like a great program. And I'm enthusiastic and supportive of the idea of supporting local businesses and farms in the state of New Hampshire. I have to ask the question, I think I heard you say it earlier, that designating New Hampshire apples, for example, is competitive on price as opposed to what could be brought elsewhere. Can you speak generally about how this source of food compares on a price-cost basis?
Yeah. Mostly, it depends on the farmer. New Hampshire, as you know, we have small farms. We don't have large farms. Most of the farmers in New Hampshire sell retail, sell at farmers' markets or sell at farm stands, and they sell at retail prices. That is, I was starry-eyed when I started. That's out of the range. It's out of the realm of what food service is able to pay, and I understand that. However, what we do, part of my job is to find the farmers, like Andre, who sells wholesale already and has the capacity to grow for schools. So his prices are set at a wholesale price. If I were to send you to the farmer's market in Portsmouth, let's say, or Durham, to purchase for your local school, you wouldn't have to worry about buying land or building a new school, because you wouldn't have any money left for it. So I find you the farmers that can provide you the prices that are competitive. So for instance, the price that Andre is estimating that his lettuce will sell at when this program starts up is the same price that Linda is buying it right now from Saunders, from Mark Saunders Produce. Now ultimately, you know, if we get Mark back involved in this, and we can take, those are some good details, but it's the same price. So there are farmers out there. Price is the ultimate issue. It's really where it comes down to.
The bottom line.
Yeah. It's what has been the, sort of the anchor weighing this whole program down from the start. But there's ways to work through it, and it's just a matter of finding the farmer. So.
Thanks.
And you mentioned this one farmer. Is he the only one signed on now? Do you have others? And how many others? I mean, how many farmers, you know, in the New Hampshire area sell at the wholesale?
Right. So this is...
Can I add to that question before you go on?
Sure.
Because you can answer them together.
Okay.
What about things like dairy, in addition to fruits and vegetables?
Good question. Okay, so I'll tackle that one first. So this is a pilot project, the one with this farmer, Andre. It's a 10-district, seacoast-area pilot project to see if it can work and how it works. So we needed to find a farmer who was able, who was in the area and was able to work with those schools. There are lots of other farmers around. The apple growers, there are big apple orchards in New Hampshire, and that's also part of why that works so well. There are lots of other farmers. So the western part of the state, over in Peterborough, the Conville School District, they're purchasing for their cafeteria something around the range of 50% of their products are coming local. It's a different venue, and we've done some different things over there. So they have farmers in that area. What we look to do, or what we've done over there, and they've done at their school district, is their food service director did some contract growing with a local farmer. So even though it was a small farmer, he was able to guarantee, "I will buy every head of lettuce that you produce from your school." So he's able to sell it at a slightly lower price than he would sell retail for, because he has a guaranteed market. And schools, which I think farmers are starting to wake up to, or I'm hoping, is big business. There is a lot of kids that they feed every day in the schools in New Hampshire. So, and it's a market that is, it's untapped by local resources. As far as the other products, the dairy, things like that, most of the schools in New Hampshire are already getting New Hampshire milk. Just by the way it works, the milk goes to the Crowley plant, and it's mostly New Hampshire milk.
State did.
Yeah. So the other issue is, as far as purchasing from a farmer for milk, there's so much government oversight on that. The same thing, I often get asked, "Well, could we get local meat?" You could, but we'd be working on this project for 10 more years before we even got to that point. So we work mostly with products, produce, fruits, water, bread, things like that.
Can I just ask one more quick question, Nathan? This is a speculative question. I'm inviting you to speculate. There's no right answer or whatever on this.
Okay.
But looking forward, you mentioned that, you know, schools are a big market. You know, do you think that there's maybe a critical mass on this Farm to School program in that if it gets big enough, starts taking a bigger and bigger bite out of the wallet of larger interstate agribusiness that has a large share of this market right now, that they might try and use their economies of scale to kind of retaliate against this kind of incremental increase of local growers?
I can, I can, yes and no. There's always the fear that, you know, that will happen, that that may occur if you start to take business away from your regular distributors or whatnot. However, on the flip side of that, there's two things. One is that national food chains and national food distributors are seeing the growth. We're part of a, the New Hampshire Farm to School program was chosen as a regional lead agency for a national Farm to School program. So we run the Northeast Farm to School Network. And there's a national push that's, the large distributors and the large food growers are seeing that communities, schools, individuals are buying local, and they want their local products, and they want healthy foods. And so they're starting to get into the market rather than force people out of it. On a very local scale, Mark, who's been a participant of this program from the beginning, sees that we are, we're looking at different models to go to, and he is extremely interested in, if he can find the local product that the school is going to purchase, he's more than happy to carry it. One of the greatest advantages that we have is the fact that schools are such a giant economic force. They say, "We want X." If that distributor doesn't give them X, there's plenty else out there that are going to come in and step in in that place. So while there is that fear, I'm finding that we're actually moving in the other direction, that we're changing their attitudes to fit our needs. So it's a long way off to get to the ideal, but they definitely are changing. Things, places like Cisco, the big one, Cisco, PFG, North Center, Costco, they're all, some of it is they're losing their business, because they're seeing it go elsewhere, and some of it, they're watching the trends. And they know where it's headed, so they better get on the bandwagon. And it's not changing anytime soon. This is not getting smaller.
Anything else for Mr. Duklos?
The only last thing I would add, and I said I'd be short, but I wasn't, is that let people know, we have, we're, we don't make any money off this, and I want to make that clear. This is not a for-profit program. We're here, I'm a resource. I'm available. Anyone can get in touch with me at any time. Email's the best way. Teachers, administrators, students, parents, we have materials for all of them. And I'm more than happy to help in any way I can to integrate any of these programs into any aspect of the school system that people may want.
And what is your email address?
It's N-D-U-C-L-O-S at unh.edu.
Thank you. I was going to suggest, Kathy, that Mr. Thompson is here, and there is a number of teachers here, to the extent that they have an interest in learning more. Maybe if there's a feeling that Mr. Duklos has the time to come down and speak to our teachers directly, and they want to hear it, it's just a suggestion to throw out there. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bring apples. Yeah, bring apples, definitely. But we're not buying New Hampshire wine for elementary school, are we?
No.
No. Okay. Tier two and tier three reading services. Mr. Thompson.
Can you get that up?
Ms. McNulty, you are up. Ms. McNulty, I'm sorry.
You got it.
I have to excuse myself.
Yeah, I can see it. Screen lights are flashing.
Night, Mike.
Sometimes it just works. I'm going to move, because this isn't going to...
Yeah. Do we have a PowerPoint?
Yes.
It's warming up.
It's coming up.
Yep. As such as it is. Maybe it's my eyes.
Should we do the lights?
Thank you for lighting.
Okay.
Do you have some hard copies of the PowerPoint?
Sure. I can grab a copy. Thank you.
Thanks.
Kathleen had asked me if I would talk about and update the board on the three-tiered model, specifically tier two and tier three. So what I'm going to do is briefly just revisit the three-tiered model, talk about some of the guidelines for instruction and the provision-making process. And Scott's going to talk about the data teams, progress monitoring, and some of the outcomes. And I guess we'll be doing reviews. So just to revisit the three-tiered model, that it's aligned with the provisions of No Child Left Behind, and the new revisions of IDEA. Oh, sorry. Specifically, response to intervention.
Let me just stop you right there. I'm still not clear what the three-tiered model is.
The three-tiered model is a reading model of intervention, yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
The next slide.
So here it is. What is a three-tiered model? It's really designed, and has been designed as a prevention model to meet the instructional needs of all readers, and specifically also to identify struggling readers, to catch them before they fail, and to provide that support early on. And if you remember the three tiers, the first tier is the core classroom instruction, and then the tier two and tier three are the intervention levels. And the person providing the intervention is called the interventionist. So, okay, I'm going to just skip this. Actually, it's aligned with the RTI, the Response to Intervention Model, which is mandated by IDEA now, which talks about universal screenings, meaning screening all students, progress monitoring, using scientifically-based reading interventions, establishing baselines and targets to plan programs for students using a problem-solving model. And essentially, New Market had all of those pieces in place. We're using benchmarks, fall, winter and spring. We're doing progress monitoring. You have some teachers piloting a core reading program. We're establishing targets for students, and we're using the three-tiered model. So here's sort of a graphic or a pictorial of the three tiers. The first level is all of the students, level two, or tier two would be approximately 20 to 30% of the students, and the intensive intervention would be 5 to 10% of the students at tier three. So here are some guidelines for tier two and tier three instruction. Students who are appearing to be struggling, meeting the criteria, and I'll show you the criteria in a minute, tier two provides an additional 30 minutes of instruction in addition to the classroom... addition to the classroom instruction. And the guidelines recommend 90 minutes, 60 to 90 minutes. In Newmarket, we're doing 60-minute blocks, reading blocks. Tier two would be small group instruction, three to five students, which could happen in the classroom, or it can happen out of the classroom. And students would be receiving some kind of intervention that's specific to their needs. Tier three would be students who perhaps have already gone through 30 minutes and need more time. And again, you have sort of a flow chart that was passed out, and I'll show you that in a minute also. So, students in tier three would get an additional 60 minutes over and above their classroom instruction. The group size would be smaller. It would be two to three students, and they would receive intensive supplemental intervention. And sometimes this would be a different programming, or something, again, very specific to their So, the criteria that we're using for identifying students for tier two, and we're using sort of multiple factors, looking at multiple points of data. Students who score below the proficient range on the kneecaps, students who score below the 25th percentile on the DIBELS or the AIMS Web assessments that we're doing, students who are one grade level below on the KNEWS, and students who might, who have failed their benchmark books, or they're one grade level below.
So, any one of those?
Any one of those, or several of those. And then, the criteria for tier three would be students, again, who are below proficient on the kneecaps, students who score below the 10th percentile on the DIBELS or the AIMS Web, and students who score two grade levels below on the KNEWS. And then again, students who perhaps have failed two benchmark books at the 95% accuracy level. And here's a flow chart, just of how that process would go. Students might be, would be identified and referred after reviewing all of the data. And so, they would get maybe tier two and go through a round of tier two, which would be eight to 12 weeks. And then, teams would get together, look at how the students were doing, and Scott's going to talk about progress monitoring, because the students are monitored on a regular basis every two weeks to see how they're doing. And teachers are using that data to drive the instruction. So, if something needs to change, something's not working, then they can change the intervention or, you know, add something different. So, a student could potentially go through tier two again. If they look like they're making progress, but they continue to need that additional support, then they would just stay at that level at tier two. If students are not making progress, and it appears that they need more time, or they need an additional intervention, or something different, then they would move on to tier three. So, students are sort of flowing through this process. And then, students at tier three, if they look like, again, that they need additional help, at that point, there might be a referral to special education or to another service. So, what's happening is that we're serving, I think, and Scott can speak to this, that we're serving a lot more students this way, and we're catching students early. So, all of the related services are all sharing. So, a lot of the students are receiving services without having to be identified or having to go through that referral process.
How long have we been using this model again?
Just this year. So, it's been a, it's been a learning curve for all of us, and we're still working with it. Okay. And then, I think the next part, Scott, is yours.
Yeah, I'll talk about that. I'm, as Mrs. Murphy is handing out some photocopies, as Mrs. Murphy is handing out some photocopies, I just want to talk a little bit about the role of progress monitoring. We actually do some kind of progress monitoring in a general way, small P, small M, for all students. As I'm sure you're aware, we use the AIMS Web and DIBELS. DIBELS, if you're not familiar with that, is an acronym for, I do know this, Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. And it measures such things as knowing letters, being able to break a word into its component parts, that kind of thing. And then, AIMS Web, we use basically to measure reading fluency, once students are at beyond pre-reading level. So, we do some kind of progress monitoring for all students. And this is a chart of reading fluency for one student from grade one through grade three. This is a student I'll not identify, of course, but tell you more about the story for this student from last year. You'll see a combination of different elements in that chart. There's a green bar, which is showing the, basically the average range, the mid-range of achievement for that skill. And then, there is a black horizontal line that goes across outside the bar, a long one. That shows the minimal level of achievement which is expected, and anyone who's below that would be of concern. And then, the short line shows the midpoint. The blue dot represents the student's personal achievement, and the graph across the bottom shows one W, which means first grade winter, then one spring, then two fall, two winter, two spring, and then grade three, fall, winter, and spring. The remarkable thing about this chart is that this is a student who was in the regular program all the way through from first grade. As you look at the blue dot and follow this student's progress, you'll see that the student was always struggling to keep up with the class. Last year, we had some grant money available, and we piloted a three-tier approach with a small number of students. That student with intensive instruction in a small group setting jumped from third-grade winter benchmark of being substantially below his peers or her peers, to being right in the middle of the third-grade standard for reading ability. This is another student that we provided services to last year in a small group setting. And again, the student jumped to, into the green range, which is a safe range. Those two charts are really typical. We'd have those for every student in the school, something like that. And then, in addition, that's the top half of this slide. Teachers conduct benchmark assessments, fall screening plus winter and spring progress monitoring, three times a year, tracking the progress of all students, and then identifying students in need of intervention. And then, the second level of progress monitoring is much more intensive, where it's done every two weeks. And I don't have a slide for this particular one, but in the handouts that you received, you'll see some models of that. There are four charts on these two pages. The first one is a fairly typical pattern, where somebody is tested every two weeks. That series of red dots you see shows the number of words they read correctly in a one-minute timed reading, on the dates underneath each of the red dots. From that, the computer model projects a target where they're going to end up if they use the median increase of number of words per minute per week in those data points. So, we can kind of project that the student is going to be, end up somewhere around 60 to 65 words per minute. And you can see up above, this is a grade-two student who's being monitored at the grade-one reading level. So, this is the student we're trying to catch up. Chart number two, bottom of that page, is for a grade-three student who is reading at the second-grade level, and this has something different. You'll see that the student started out very early in the fall, jumping way above the target line that those significant increase made. And then, around January, after vacation, the student really kind of stayed right where they were. However, the target goes up every week. So, what happened is that we, there's documented change there. The teacher modified the program that was used in the tier-two or tier-three instruction. And then, what happened is that we saw a remarkable increase. It's this kind of responsiveness to children's progress that's really at the heart of progress On the next page, another interesting case. In this chart, you'll see that a student was not progress monitored through the fall. Apparently, they were okay. And then, after we had December report cards, I would assume, the team determined that this student would, would be eligible for progress monitoring. Because of that, tests were done every couple of weeks for five consecutive sessions, and the student is really way above the black line, which is the target line, and that's looking pretty good. This is a grade-three student, and this is an important thing to note, that this student is being monitored at the grade-two level, which means they're still not caught up with their peers. But with those high numbers, one might ask, well, if they're doing so well, which they appear to be, should we, you know, kind of put it up a notch, as they say on that cooking show? And that's exactly what happened in example number four. Here was a grade-three student who was being monitored up until January at a grade-two reading level. The scores continued for a number of weeks to be above the target line. And so, then, in January, it was determined that we'd begin monitoring that student at a third-grade level because they had grown significantly in their reading ability. And then, you can see the results of that testing over four consecutive testing periods. And except for the week before our snow day, they seem to be doing pretty well. So, you know, we don't worry about one test, we look at the overall pattern. So, this is a very responsive kind of program for us to use to determine students' progress.
Scott, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
On the, yeah, on the subject of, you know, progress monitoring deals generally with monitoring the progress of students so that they can appropriately be exited from a tier two or three intervention, that's correct, right?
That's one function of it.
Okay.
Yeah. The other might be that it gives us information about whether we're using the correct intervention to help that student best.
Right. Okay. Now, that being the case, and this being the first year that we're doing this, you know, we have people funneling into the tier-two and tier-three model based on test results.
Yes.
We have people coming out the other end, hopefully successfully.
Yeah.
Exiting the program, back to normal classroom instruction. How are we doing on a, as a practical matter, managing, you know, managing the number of students who are actually in there? I mean, is there, there hasn't been, you know, one could imagine a situation where if there was a greater inflow into the tier-two or tier-three model than we could support with our staff, that the whole thing, you know, it's kind of, the outflow sort of has to roughly approximate the inflow, or it's going to get out of balance. Has that been working out okay?
Currently, we have about 30 percent of our students who are in either tier-two or tier-three instruction. If you think back to the, the triangle that you saw, that's exactly the ranges that they estimated.
Oh, so it has been tracking what, what we thought?
It's been pretty close, and that's not because we say, okay, we'll take 30 percent. It's because we use those data sources to determine who would be eligible.
Yeah.
And what it tells me is that we're using pretty good data sources, because we're fitting the, the general model. And you are right, that, you know, we have to take a look at the other end of it, and that is how do students kind of exit. In the handout that you were given, the front shows the entrance criteria, kind of a longer version of what you saw on the slide up here. And that was developed through the fall and has been in use since then. And the other side of that page shows the exit criteria for each grade level, which has also been being developed, but.
Well, I'm pleased to hear that it's been working out. I mean, you know, it could, it might have to be tweaked or something, or I don't know. It would be a challenge if it wasn't balanced properly.
It's definitely a challenge. There's no doubt about that. And it certainly has changed the way that we're using some of our personnel. The reading people, for example, are doing more small-group direct instruction, and the design assumes that classroom teachers do direct instruction during the tier-one time, when everyone is present. And I want to stress, that includes the students who are in tier-two or three.
Thanks.
Yep.
So, the tier-two and three pieces, those are pull-out situations?
Some of it's done right in a classroom, and in some cases, they'll use a classroom that's empty or something like that.
Let me just, are we, is the presentation complete?
There's one more slide.
Okay.
Yep.
No, that's okay.
That question couldn't wait.
No, no, it's, it's just people couldn't hear Cliff's question, so.
All right. The last piece of it is data teams. Through our Title II Grant, I believe, we were able to provide every grade-level team with a data mentor. And those people are paid hourly as a stipend to help with the acquisition, if you will, of data about the team, and also the interpretation of that. In addition, using some of the central office staff, for which we're very grateful, every team has an administrator assigned to work with that team as well. And those groups meet either monthly, as my team does, or in some cases, biweekly, in order to use the data to not only change what we might be doing with students, but also to look if we might be, need to change what we're doing in the classroom, those things. That's the end of it.
Thank you. People at home want to hear what you have to say, Cliff.
I guess I have a, I don't want to detract from, you know, the mission that we're on to work on literacy. It's of paramount importance. I just, I have, I've got a concern I guess I'd like you to speak to in where we're looking at a lot of time, two hours a day in tier-two, two and a half hours a day with specific reading instruction. I'm, I'm wondering, what's getting pushed aside? Are we losing some classroom cohesion? Are we, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, a lot of fun things, you know, there's a lot of opportunities to inspire kids in the classroom, and I'm wondering, how do you keep that inspiration going when you've got, you know, an hour of intensive reading instruction in addition to the reading instruction that they're getting as part of their normal curriculum?
That's a very important and fair question. Teachers, of course, had those concerns as well. And I've given teachers some latitude in rearranging the schedule, so, for example, they could shift the time that they might be doing science, so it's not always while a student is out of the classroom. Or, and all of the students also participate in all of the specials, so they do art, music, PE, those things are not touched. And the 90 minutes of instructional time that's given for the tier-one thing, that's really language arts. So, a lot of teachers are doing content area reading, they're doing literature, those kinds of things. It's not all direct instruct- It's not all direct instruction, I can assure you of that. So it's something that we are working on. So you know, we spent a good bit of our faculty time, half of it, in the February meeting. And we talked about problems we see. We've typed all those up and we're working to address those. So all teachers met in small group teams at the faculty meeting. And we're taking those and we're trying to tweak the program so that we can address some of those. Some of the suggestions have come up, you know, might have a cost, or they might have a creative solution. For example, one thing that sometimes happens is some of the additional reading time is done before or after the school day. The problem with that is that we don't have transportation guaranteed, so students might miss out based on parents' inability to get them there. And that does not seem like a good choice for me. The last thing I'd like to say is that, yes, there's always a trade-off, but from where I stand, the ability to read is probably the number one indicator of school success. So for those students, it may be a sacrifice that they're, they and their parents are willing to have them make for a year.
And I guess that gets, speaks a little bit to Paul's comments earlier about this not being a sustained thing. You're getting kids back into their grade, where they ought to be grade level, and then hopefully they'll stay there.
I can tell you the kids are succeeding, yes. We still have students who might be a whole year below grade level, and, you know, it's going to take a lot of intervention. It may take a while to catch them up. But again, if we look at the whole educational picture, K through 12, when we get to even grade four, certainly the middle school and definitely the high school, if a student cannot read at grade level, they are really going to be hampered in their ability to access any of the curriculum. Okay? Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Thompson, Ms. McNulty?
I just make, thank you for your time and coming in. Thank you very much for coming and taking time to show us. I think it's good for people to see, both on the board and on, you know, on television for the community, that these programs do make a difference and you're spending the time needed to do that. I want to thank the teachers that came tonight too, because I know you're the ones in the trenches, putting in the time, doing the interventions, and spending the time, you know, helping, helping the children. And that third grade year is that magic year. If you don't read by third grade, we know the, the studies tell us, you're in big trouble. So, thank you very much.
I'd just like to say also, I think that, you know, maybe as a board, we can think about, you know, maybe trying to offer some kind of an after-school, you know, for these, the kids. So something, you know, just something that...
Like a late bus or something?
Yeah, something that maybe we can think about at some point, you know, if, if, if it would be helpful.
Do you remember last summer, excuse me, you authorized us to offer some summer program?
Right.
And Scott used the same principals here and selected those students to give them additional help. He'll be reporting about that, the progress of those youngsters, when he does his principals' report. I believe it's next month that both the principals will be reporting to you on that. But you did, and that was terrific, because we, we had a little extra money to be able to address that. But I, I love the idea of the late bus.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm thinking, you know, let's, let's, you know, what are the numbers, you know, what are, what, how many parents are able to pick up after?
Right.
You know, let's, let's take a look at that and see if we can put something together, a late bus, or, you know, how many parents can pick up versus would need transportation? And let's look at that.
Great.
So the more specific the recommendation that we get, the better?
Right.
We can address it.
Right.
Okay.
That's awesome.
Good.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thanks.
Correspondence?
None, sir, that I have.
Business department update. Update on water damage at the high school and status of the chairlift.
Oh, we'll start with the, um...
Night, everybody.
Good night. Good night.
Thanks for coming.
Good night.
What's that? Go ahead, Sue.
The chairlift at the high school. I'm not sure if you're aware, but we've struggled trying to get that to work for a number of years. It's old. We can't seem to find people to fix it. There are parts to repair it are difficult to find. And we need, every year, we need state inspection on that, state certification. So I'm happy to report that we were able to accomplish that, and it's up and running for now.
Until the next time it breaks.
Exactly. And it's, it's very fragile, I will tell you that. The other alternative is perhaps an elevator. But right now, we're continuing to keep that going.
Do we have any students in high school right now who use that on a regular basis?
Um...
Or is it just like if somebody breaks their leg and they...
Exactly. That's pretty much what, where we are. Fortunately, we don't. If we did, we would have a problem. Because the science labs are on the second floor. What we have to do is accommodate the student and bring the students downstairs for their classes, and that's, you know, not an ideal situation. So, that's where we are with the chairlift.
Okay. And the water damage?
Water damage. On Saturday, March 10th, we had some considerable damage done to the high school library caused by a leak. At first, we thought it was the roof. Actually, fortunately, George Lucy, the head custodian, was in that particular day, working with a plumber on some repairs to the teacher's bathroom. We had some septic problems with that bathroom on the second floor, so he was in. When he was walking through the building, he discovered that the library had some leakage coming down on some of the bookshelves. And as I said, it was considerable. George was very good about responding. He called our insurance company, the insurance company called Servpro. He called all of the people that worked for him, and they got in here and got most of it up by the end of the day. And as I said, considerable, there were three racks of books that were destroyed, a couple of chairs. The rug, it appears that the rug's going to be okay, they've dried it out. We've had some fans in there, dehumidifiers. But again, it was some, a considerable amount of water. As I say, fortunately, he was there. If we had discovered that on Monday morning, we wouldn't be in such a great situation.
As the weather gets warmer, can we keep a careful nose out for mold?
Yes. And actually, I talked with him about that. I suggested that he perhaps get a dehumidifier and run it permanently in that location. That's always a concern. The adjuster that came from our insurance company mentioned that, you know, certainly if we felt that we needed to replace that rug, he would, he would certainly support that. It looks pretty good. I, I looked at it. You know, that's a major job to replace that entire carpet in that area.
Empty the room in order to do it?
Empty the room, you're talking all of the books. They treated it several times with a chemical to prevent mold. And they're pretty confident that, confident that that's going to do it. But again, they're going to keep an eye on that, so that we don't have a problem with it.
Sue, is this something that George or some other person with familiarity with plumbing and so forth would say is a fluke? Or should we, does this call for a more exhaustive inspection? Are we on the verge of this happening somewhere else in the building?
I'd have to say that we're always on the verge of that happening because of the pipes that are in that building. They're very old. It was a hot water pipe. As I said, I thought it was the roof. It's, it's a constant battle to continue to maintain that building with the, the system that's in there. It's very old. We could replace all those pipes, but we...
So this was like not at a joint or something like that?
I'm not sure. I don't know that I got the specifics on that, but it was definitely in the suspended ceiling, an older pipe. It's not the first time.
What's George, I mean, does George think it's likely to happen somewhere else?
Sure.
He thinks it's, he thinks it's a real possibility?
It's a real possibility.
Before we start talking about replacing pipes, let's remember there's a fair amount of asbestos in the building.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know exactly where it all is.
Not, not, not on any of the pipes. We actually are, I think there's only one section left that has it in the actual pipes that are part of the structure exposed. I mean, most of it's under the gym floor. Most of it's floor tile, what's in our asbestos plan right now. So there isn't, that doesn't mean that there's, when we uncover something, we might find more, but right now, I'm pretty sure...
That's what I'm saying. When you start doing that work, it's pretty soon...
Right. Areas that we haven't uncovered, we may discover more of it, but right now, we don't...
And that, that, are you going to ask something for us?
No.
That, I'm trying to think. That library part of the building, that is in the 1960 edition?
No, I think that's a 52 part of the building.
Oh, I'd have to see.
We're putting you on the spot here, that's a...
Yeah, I know, I'd have to go back and...
I don't know.
I believe that's in the 1952 part of the building.
It's part of the old gym.
That's part of the original building.
That's the original 1920s.
That's the original building, because that's the original gymnasium.
Well, no, the gym was, was added on in the 50s, though.
The gym was added in the 52.
The original building did not include the gym, so it wasn't...
The original gym building did not include the gym.
Right.
So that's a pipe that, in all likelihood, dated from the early 50s.
As far as I know, yes.
And we have pipes in that building that date from the 1920s.
We do, we do.
They built them right back then.
I will tell you too, that George continues to report to me on a regular basis about leaks. We did have a few other leaks from the roof. I reported to you a while ago about some patch and repairs that we should perhaps look into. And that's going to start to come back to haunt us as the ice on that roof melts. He had a problem with that this week, a couple of considerable leaks on the other side.
Yeah, I, I was in the gym on a Friday night for my son's basketball practice, the night that we had the heavy snow all during the day. And there was a leak onto the gym floor, which caused, the people who were there were very good about, Paul Brangle and those folks are very good about cleaning it up, but we called Randy, we caused Randy a fair amount of agita to think, to think about ruining the gym floor. It's a very expensive proposition.
Sue, would, would you mind asking George, like, maybe you could, if you don't mind, Chris, you could port back to us for, at the next meeting, just for public benefit, on that question of, is there, is there anything we can do? Are we totally at the mercy of, of random pipers? I mean...
Sure, I can talk to him about that.
Thank you.
But it, you know, again, the roof is still considers, still continues to be a concern. And I know he's mentioned that to me several times. What I'd like to propose is that I'll put together a budget overview for the end of the year, and that we at least do those patch and repairs that I brought to you at the last meeting, to just at least assure that we're in good shape for some of those areas that we know, over the next year or two, are going to be a problem.
You know, to be helpful, we, we've talked about the amount of money that we've spent keeping up with the building, the hundreds of thousands over the past several years. I think it'd be nice to have kind of an ongoing basis, a chart that shows who's, who's coming out to do fixes and what they're doing and how much money we're spending. And have that on a rolling basis, if that can be done in a, in a spreadsheet of some kind.
Sure. Actually, I just talked to Kathleen about that. There's a system out there, put out by a company called School Dude, and I just went to a workshop on that, where we could track that very well with an automated system.
Does that make sense? So we can, and we can make that part of the business department update?
Sure.
Say, what are we doing? And let, let the folks know what we're spending, because questions frequently come up that the reason the building is in the shape it's in is because we don't maintain it properly.
Well, we do, but...
Well, I'm just saying that the question comes up.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, and it's an easy question to ask, and it's an easy piece of information.
Sure.
Or misinformation, as the case may be, to throw out there. So I think if we have this kind of information available, it'll give the public a head start on understanding some of the challenges that we have to face, just in terms of the physical plant. So I think that'll be helpful.
So I'll get back to you with an update on, with George, his thoughts on the pipes. Is that what you wanted me to?
Anything else, Sue?
Negative action.
I have nothing. Unless you...
Manifest.
I'd make a motion to accept the total for the manifest for the current period of
I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Can you pass that down to Penny? Calendar? James, were you missing anything significant?
Got a whole stack of things tonight.
Please.
This Saturday, March 24th, Project Graduation will be hosting Bingo again from 12 to 3 p.m. Doors open at 11:30. There'll be lots of food and prizes. Also this Saturday, a penny sale will be held at the high school, sponsored by the class of 2009.
Did you say the bingo was at, at the high school, right?
The bingo is at the high school.
Thank you.
From 12 to 3 p.m., doors open at 11:30. There'll be a penny sale hosted by the class of 2009, also at the high school. Doors will open at 4:30, and the drawings will start at 7. Food will be sold, and prizes will vary, from restaurant gift certificates, to haircuts, and even to a pair of Red Sox tickets. Next Wednesday, March 28th, at 6:30 p.m. in the school cafeteria, the Newmarket Junior and Senior High School bands will be hosting dessert and a show. Admission is $2 for adults and $1 for children. Music, food, and prizes. And the question that's come up a lot lately is the high school play. The Drama Club will be performing Go Ask Alice, a tragic, dramatic treatment of teenage life, school, social adaptability, parental communication, sibling rivalry, peer pressure, friendship, betrayal, and addiction. This is a very powerful cautionary tale that pulls no punches about telling how it is. There's something to be learned by teens and parents alike.
All in one play? All that in one play?
All that in one play. There are also some funny parts, some intentional, some not, that underscore what we all know about life. It's full of experiences from comic to tragic. And the performances are as follows. Friday, April 13th, at 7 p.m. Saturday, April 14th, at 2 p.m. And again at 7 p.m. And all ticket prices will be $5.
Are you in the play, James?
I am not in the play.
Friday and Saturday? Did you say Sunday?
No. Nope, no Sunday. Friday, April 13th, 7 p.m. And then Saturday, April 14th, at 2 p.m. and 7 p.m.
Very good. Anything else?
That's it for now.
Thank you. Anyone else with a calendar item?
Is there a graduation date anticipated at this point? Am I cursing us for having another snow day by asking that question?
Yes, you did. You just jinxed us.
You just jinxed it.
Mrs. Brooks, Mrs. Brooks will be in the first week in April. I think the principals are making their presentations, and she'll have a recommendation. We feel if we get through the month of March, we'll be all set.
Okay.
We have had one snow day this year.
You jinxed us there.
Why's that?
By just announcing that, yeah.
By saying that. But I checked the long-range forecast before I said it.
Yeah, that's, that's good, because people have to make travel plans.
Right. We've already gotten a few calls. We tentatively have, you know, an idea when the kids will have reached the number of days that they need, and we know that, but we're hesitant, you know, as after last year. We just don't want to have to go through that again. Upset everyone.
Say that again.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great Bay Half Marathon and Fitness Expo.
I, I just put that in, it's an FYI. I thought it was kind of exciting. We have our, some of our teachers are participating in this, and with the wellness program, that, the walking program.
No, I know.
And then the, they're having a health fair at the high school on the 31st. The Exeter Hospital is supporting it, so it's a great community activity. Just thought I'd share that with you.
There, it is going to be, there will be something in the order of 1,500 runners, which is a lot of folks running through, through town, so...
Where's the course split?
It, it starts essentially at the elementary school, heads into town, Beach Street Extension to Elm Street, and then out Dame Road, into Durham, back Bay Road, back through town, and finishes at the high school.
What time does it start?
Wow.
It's 13.1 miles, half marathon.
Fantastic.
Cliff, what time does it start?
I believe the walk starts at, walkers start at 10:30, and the race is at 11, 11.
It doesn't say that, it doesn't say on here.
It doesn't say when it starts.
No.
Does it?
No, that's expo.
That's an oversight.
Yeah, it doesn't say what time.
Right. I, I mean, I just got these from somebody, so I, I would just have you contact the Great Bay Half, Cara Local Sports, and they have...
Does it?
No, that's expo.
That's an oversight.
Hmm. Yeah, the, it doesn't say what time.
Right. I, I mean, I just got these from somebody. So I, I would just have you contact the Great Bay Half Caraloco Sports. And they have an address there of P.O. Box 423 in Newmarket.
It starts where? Where's the starting point?
It starts at, on Durrell, over by the elementary school.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't say that either.
Well, I think you have to, this is a form that you have to send in to.
Right. With registration.
It's a secret until you register.
Then you'll get the details.
Right.
It's a secret until you register. But if you don't know where it's, oh, never mind.
They have a website, right? It's all on there.
Yeah. If you look at, I think it's localrunning.com or something like that. I'm sure you could find your way to that. And if you intend to do it and you're not registered yet, you might need to hurry or you might be closed out at this point. But it's going to be a busy day in town. It'll, should be a lot of fun, expo and the race as well.
Great. Thank you. Career Fair.
This is an annual event sponsored by the School to Career Program. It's just very successful. And Dr. Winterbarn wanted to make sure that everyone would know when it was and assure the board that the invitation is extended to you. And if you have a few minutes, then you can stop by and participate and/or just visit the different booths, she just wanted you to know about it.
April 12th, 2007.
Right. It's on your calendar.
In the high school, 8 to 11. Fantastic. Goals.
Prior to goals, Mr. Chairman, do we need to act on the athletic coaches?
Yes, that did not get on the agenda and I apologize for that. But I'm pleased to put forth a list of coaches for our spring sports program, athletic program at the high school. Varsity baseball, David Adams. Varsity softball, Jack Brown. JV baseball, Peter Culbert. JV softball, Beth Rowe. Junior high baseball, Justin Weber. And junior high softball, David Chelsky.
Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the spring coaching list as presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
FYI, we were not able to get a coach for track. We advertised, we tried to find somebody for spring track. But Randy was able to work out a situat, a system with, our students will be participating with Oyster River. So our kids will still have that opportunity for track and running, because we have some very talented track athletes. And so we will be working with Oyster River. And we're just trying to work out transportation.
Okay. I'd like to pass over the goals for now, because we have to have it non-public. That's okay with folks? It's starting to get late.
I only put them in, Chris, because you had asked to see where we stood on the goals, the outcomes. So I tried to give you an idea about approximately where we were. I, I just, it was more of an FYI.
Yeah, that's, that's helpful.
Because you had asked, well, where are we with these goals? It's all fine and dandy to have them, but.
Yeah.
No, it's helpful. It's helpful. And we're not going to, we'll, we'll get back to that.
Great.
But the enrollment that some of us have seen, do you, do we need to have a comment on this tonight?
Enrollment is just the kind of forms we have to provide to the state. Chris asked that I put it in your packets. It just breaks down all of the different categories and the, our average daily membership. And it's just FYI.
Okay. That being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to go in the non-public to discuss personnel and real property issues.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Good night. Good night.